Got a little heavy handed there, got it out of the way early. I will be in our chair tonight, Mr. J.R. Rigby. The normal chairman is with us online. Hi, Mr. Rigby, are you there, sir?
I am.
Very well. Well, if I mess up too bad, please feel free to chime in. Anyway, I'd like to call to order the December Planning Commission meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review the agenda? We've got one administrative approval and three consent. The consent agenda, is there a motion from the commission up there?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So move to all in favor, please vote aye.
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 All right, if everyone has had a chance to review the minutes from the November meeting, are there any changes we need to make November minutes? If there are none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve minutes.
Second.
There is a second, all those in favor of approval, please vote aye.
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 All right, is there a staff report, Mr.? No staff report. All right. Without further ado, that brings us to public hearings, starting with case number 3296.
We've got the consent agenda.
Do we have to prove this separately?
Yes.
Pardon me. All right, all the consent agenda, does anyone have any changes to the consent agenda? If there are none, I would entertain a motion.
See if there's anybody here from the audience that wants to object.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Anyone in the audience that would have any objection to the consent agenda? I can read those off if you'd like. All right, if there are no changes or questions regarding the consent agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Is there a second? All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Gerald. The consent agenda is approved. Now with the public hearings. Case number 3296, go ahead when you're ready, ma'am.
So this case is regarding 616 South 11th Street, which is located at a corner lot at South 11th and Fillmore Avenue. The applicant seeks approval for a fence height variance to locate a six-foot wood fence on the Fillmore Avenue side of the property. This fence will replace an existing four-foot wood picket fence. The other fencing proposed in the plan, which is a wooden brick eight-foot fencing, is located in between this home and the neighboring home and meets the requirements of the code. This project received a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Preservation Commission at the November meeting of that commission. According to the application, the Knights are seeking a variance to erect a fence in their front yard to allow for privacy and protection of grandchildren and pets. The property is a corner lot, which has two side yards and two front yards, eliminating the ability for the owner to enjoy the privacy of the backyard. Also, the property to the east is at a higher elevation, causing drainage issues, and so the lower portion of the fence is supposed to be brick. This is on the side that is not requesting the variance. Would also act as a retaining wall to divert rainwater from entering the Knights' property. Granted, the variance will also help contain a large puppy who was able to jump over the current fence and that may otherwise create a nuisance. So the portion of the project, as I mentioned, which requires the variance, is the six-foot wooden privacy fence that fronts Fillmore and which is at the side and rear of the house, but is defined by the code as a front yard. As stated in the general district regulations, fences, walls, and hedges should be no, not be over four feet in height. As the property is a corner lot, the applicant is limited by the code when it comes to privacy. By nature, the corner lot deprives the applicant of the ability to enclose their rear yard privately, a condition which is commonly enjoyed by owners of interior lots. Staff finds this a valid reason to support the proposed variance and is recommending approval of the variance with the condition that it's for the plan as submitted.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any questions from the commission?
And the applicants here as well, if anyone has questions for them.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Any questions regarding case number 3296? Or those online, Mr. Rigby?
No question.
There are no questions from the commission, or those online? Anyone in the audience have a question, a comment? Hearing none, or those with us online? Any other questions or comments regarding this 3296? If there are none, I would entertain a motion at this time.
I make a motion that the, it is approved, including the variance that is listed on the recommendation.
Second.
There is a second, all those in favor, please vote aye.
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 Thank you, Ms. Rigby. It is approved. That moves us on to case number 3297.
Thank you. So this is a special exception request related to 106 Country Club Road, which is located just off from the intersection of Country Club Road and College Hill Road. The applicant received a special use for an accessory dwelling unit at the October 2025 meeting of this commission. And following that October approval, the applicant requested to return to the commission for a special exception approval to allow for the ADU to be rented. And speaking with the applicant, it seems that the ADU will be primarily used as office space for the family, like a home office, nothing commercial. However, they would like the option to occasionally rent the ADU. Should the special exception be approved, the applicant will be required to file a restrictive covenant with the Chancery Clerk, stating that the use will comply with all the standards as it was previously, that the primary dwelling on the property will be owner occupied. And we have not received any feedback, positive or negative, regarding the application.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the commission on 3297?
Kate, was the rental use discussed or contemplated the first time around in October?
I wasn't handling that case at the time, but it's my understanding that when it came time to file the covenants, that was handled by their builder. I think once they had a chance to look at the covenants, they said, kind of like, I don't necessarily want to close out this opportunity to maybe rent it out. But I believe the applicant's here would like to work with them. Yep.
Yeah, well, I wasn't aware.
Would you, please come over real quick and, for the record?
Yeah, it's correct that the builder did handle the initial filing, and I wasn't aware of kind of the language that would be in the covenant to release the building permit. So when I read it and saw that, you know, no renting outside of the permanent dwelling unit, I just wanted to follow up and make sure that occasionally renting it out as a short-term rental would be available to me.
Perfect. And you are Mr. Jack Pitts?
I am.
I don't have any further questions. That answers everything. Does anybody else have any further questions? Any questions from the audience while Mr. Pitts is up here?
Is there any limits on occasional rental? Or that, once we grant this, can you rent it every weekend? You could. And there, the city does not have a short-term rental policy.
Yeah, I think the most restrictive are usually the covenants for the neighborhood. So I think that's what you said you were checking into, right?
Correct.
Good. Questions from those online? Mr. Rigby?
No questions.
Questions from anyone else online? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion at this time for case number 3297. You can sit down. Thank you, Ms. Pitts. All right, anybody have a motion on 3297? Mr. Rigby, do you have a motion on 3297?
Motion to approve with a staff condition.
A motion to approve subject to staff conditions, is there a second? We have a second. All those in favor, please vote aye. Aye. Please vote aye. One, two noes. Mr. Rigby? One no. Okay, Mr. Rigby?
Aye.
Five aye, one no. It is approved. Thank you, Mr. Pitts. That moves us on to case number 3298.
Good evening. The subject property is an undeveloped residential parcel consisting of just under half an acre in the Grand Oaks Plan Unit Development, or PUD. This property is Lot 179 of the Gardens at Grand Oaks Phase Two, which was platted in case 3085 with a front yard setback of 50 feet and a side and rear yard setbacks of 25 feet. The applicant is seeking variance from the platted build-to minimum, proposing to instead build to a structure which comply with the estate residential, which is the most restrictive underlying zoning, 40-foot build-to minimum, and 15-yard build, side yard setbacks. The applicant describes the request in a document which is included in this packet. The applicant describes several conditions which speak to a potential hardship. Among these are the size and shape of the lot. The lot significantly narrows towards the front, about 100 feet at the front of the lot, and about 145 feet at the rear of the lot, slightly less than that. They also mention the topography, which the applicant states includes a hill in the middle of the lot's buildable area. And the applicant also notes the special needs of their young child. The applicant states that this necessitates multiple ground floor bedrooms. The applicant also argues that the platted setbacks are inconsistent with other similarly-sized lots in subdivision and in the planning and development more generally. And as a result of these factors, the applicant, their application states that they cannot build a home which they consider suitable within the platted setbacks, which they characterize in their application as at least 3,000 square feet, which necessitates the variance. They also, in their application, provide a house plan on the lot, which exceeds the setbacks per the plat, and it also exceeds the setbacks per the underlying zoning. That drawing indicates that they have abandoned that plan. They've also included an example house plan with a first-floor heated and cooled area of a little over 3,300 square feet and a total square footage of over 5,700 square feet. The commission will need to determine as a part of this request whether this house plan is suitable for the applicant's request and whether this request is for that house plan or for a different house plan which has yet to be submitted, or simply to defer to the state residential zoning. The city's Land Development Code empowers the planning commission to grant variances based on a few findings. A, the reasons stated in the application justify the granting of the variance and that the variance is the minimum needed to make possible reasonable use of the land. And B, that the granting of the variance will be harmonized the general purpose and intent of the code and will not harm the public welfare. SaaS policy in dealing with platted lots and planned unit developments has been to respect the established setback and build-to lines on the subdivision plat. Given the existing policy and the consideration of the application, staff does not find sufficient hardship, which is not self-created, in order to grant variance in this case, as we are recommending denial. But if the planning commission should make the necessary findings to justify approval, staff just requests that the condition that the approval is for the request is submitted is included. Thank you, happy answering questions. And I do believe the applicant is here tonight, if you have any questions for them.
All right. Questions from the commission? Mr. Rigby, do you have any questions for case number 3298?
I don't think so.
Oh, I've got a question here, a question or two. Is it Mr. Arthur? Would you come up so we can?
How you doing, sir?
Evening, thank you.
Yes, sir. Well, I guess really the best way to do this is to say what, I've got, we've got the letter here. You know, I don't want you to read the whole letter, but in summary, can you tell us why we should do this as far as hardship? And I'll say that I don't see a hardship. You know, my stance on a lot of these, really almost all of them is, the way I look at it is, is something changed that was after the person bought it, that was outside of their control. I don't see that here. It looks like the lot was what it was when you bought it. Tell me what, or I guess tell the commission what hardships that we're not aware of.
Yeah, I think the main thing is that if you look at the way the plat is set up, it's really piggybacking on the other 24 lots that sort of lead into it. And if you read very closely in the covenants, it says on the amended covenants for the new lots that we bought, that the setbacks shall be as set forth on the other plat. And the other plat actually has setbacks of 50, 15, and 25 on the rear for all 16 of the lots in that 24-lot batch that have a half-acre size, like ours. So I don't know what the exact intention of the drafter of the plat was, but I think the intention was to make it consistent with the other lots, again, 16 of which are 15-foot side setbacks. And so I think we could easily make that work. And, you know, for, and again, our plat doesn't actually have the numbers on them like the original plats. So I think that's the biggest thing in terms of unique characteristics and hardship, is that the only way to determine its 50-25s is to scale it, and then the covenants are then the covenants are somewhat inconsistent with that. So I think that's the strongest argument, kind of on the merits. And then the other argument I have on, you know, kind of the equitable factors is kind of the efforts we went to to try to fit it and the efforts we went to in terms of trying to get something that fits on that narrow trapezoidal sort of space. And then, of course, you know, needing those ground floor bedrooms for our daughter who has autism spectrum disorder. She's not independent enough to have separate floors where we live and where she lives. So those are kind of my key overarching points on this, that really, in terms of the standard being, is our property capable of being used as other similarly situated properties? Well, with respect to sixteen of the twenty-four other lots right up the road for us, from which our plat was created, we don't have the same ability to use it as sixteen of those twenty-four lots. That's more than half, and certainly all the ones that are the size of our lot.
Just so I'm clear, the sixteen other lots have got a fifteen-foot setback?
Right. So the way our plat works is it is an extension. It just goes straight off of the twenty-four lots, houses that have been built since the early two thousands. And of those twenty-four lots, if you go look at those plats, those actually say, you know, fifty and then twenty-five on the one acre lots, the big lots in that part that leads into ours, they say twenty-five. And if you look at the other ones, this is actually on one of my pages here, the other half acre lots leading in say fifteen. So to the extent the covenants say plats are as stated on the original plat, or setbacks are stated, some are stated as fifteen, some are stated as twenty-five. So it's, for us, like, hey, we've got a half acre lot. To us, that's the same as the sixteen half acre lots from which our lot plat was created. So that's what we're asking for. Can we have the same ability to build that the other people with half acre lots and fifteen feet on the plats? Because you know, our plat doesn't have the numbers on it. It just has the buildable space and a scale. So really, at minimum, if we could get ten feet on either side, and again, if we're thinking about public interest, you know, we're not asking for a variance to build something crazy or something that's out of texture. We just want to be able to build the same kind of house that sixteen people up the street from us built.
So the houses right next to you that join your lot, do they have, are they their twenty-five foot?
So as we understand it, the intention at some point was that all of the ones in our plat be fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five. But if you read the amended covenants, they say that, you know, the plats are as stated on the first plat, because there's no numbers on ours. So there's ours, and yeah, there's no numbers. There's just that buildable space, and it's written to the scale. But if you go look at the original plat of the two thousand three's plat of the other lots in that neighborhood, they have them, I'm sorry, I'm holding this up so you can read it from there. But if you go to the pages where lots number one fifty-four through one seventy-four are, you can see that most of the ones that are kind of funny shaped and closer to a half acre like ours are all fifteen-foot side setbacks. And again, we were trying to make a sort of a simple conclusion of, hey, why don't we just scale this back to the estate lot? You know, our lot kind of straddles estate and suburban. We were hoping, hey, least restricted. But look, if we're willing to go for fifteen feet on the sides, I know we can make that work. And we're not even asking to take the twenty-five off the back either. And again, we're, you know, public welfare, public interest, we're not trying to, we're trying to build something consistent with our neighbors. And, you know, we're definitely not.
Do you ask my next question? Do you, are we built, are there houses already built at all on any of these lots? Are they all still?
No, sir. Everything is still unbuilt. We would be the first to be moving.
Okay. So Ben, so Ben, this plat, I mean, is it fifteen feet or twenty-five? Or hers, whoever, one of them.
Well, yeah, I mean, there are dimensions on the plat. I mean, the buildable areas, as you see on here, it shows like lot one eighty-three, it shows on the plat, it's a fifty-foot front setback, it's a twenty-five-foot side setback, and a twenty-five-foot rear setback.
But that's not on our lot.
So if you do this, then it's kind of...
It's indicative of all of the lots that are entered. It's not a common thing to happen in subdivision flats.
But the other plat that it's based on, as the sponsor is, has a primary lot.
When we're considering this...
That's a separate subdivision plat. This is its own subdivision plat. And that shows right there. Fifty-foot front, twenty-five-foot side, twenty-five-foot rear. That was planted, too.
Mr. Edwards, when we're considering this, especially since you're the first construction or potentially, it would defeat the purpose we've been doing this, right? Of even having setbacks and even having it all laid out. Out of the gate, we just go ahead and decrease it down to fifteen feet, especially if it's already on the lots. And I mean, I'm sure people probably passed on properties and they wanted to buy here, et cetera, because of the setback. You know, there was like, well, I can't fit what I want because there's a twenty-five-foot setback, right? It's not really fair to those folks. My default is to, unless there's, and I don't, I don't hear, I mean, I hear your arguments. I don't agree with them. Twenty-five feet and fifteen feet is a big difference, right? You know, you're looking at houses and how a neighborhood looks. Ten feet, having houses this close or this close is pretty drastic, in my opinion. And they plotted it this way for a reason. So I don't...
I'll say I don't believe anyone's objected. And, you know, the developer has, you know, very kindly said he doesn't object. He still owns ten or eleven of the rest of them.
I mean, maybe he should just replat it. I think that would deal with it.
I can ask.
But as for me, that's my opinion on it. If anybody else has questions or comments, that was, that's all I had. Mr. Rigby, do you have any questions?
No further questions.
All right. Is there questions from the audience? Questions or comments? Or those online? Okay. If there's other further questions or comments, then you don't have to, you can stand there if you want to. You don't have to by any means. But at this time, we'd entertain a motion for case number three two nine eight.
Motion to deny.
There's a motion to deny by Mr. Rigby. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Also, all of those who vote in favor of denial, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Rigby. All right. It is denied. Thank you, sir. All right. That concludes three two nine eight. Brings us to three two nine nine. Case number three two nine nine. Mr. Baxter.
All right. Three two nine nine and thirty-three hundred are going to be about the same property. So this is, subject property is about thirty-three and a half acres, located on Old Taylor Road, just north of Faulkner Flats. Applicant is proposing a student housing development of three hundred ninety-six multifamily units, which are two and three bedrooms, and fifty-one four-bedroom detached units. The site is split between suburban residential and suburban multifamily. Seven of these proposed detached units are located in the suburban multifamily zoning, and those would require a special exception. Staff supports this request as ask is quite minimal in relation to the overall development. And three of these seven units will butt the South Campus Rail Trail, and that presents a smaller facade towards that rail trail than what a multifamily building. So staff recommends approval. The request is special exception with finding that the request will not harm the public interest and the two conditions in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Baxter. Questions from the commission?
I have a question for Robert.
Sure.
You mentioned the facade and the rail trail, but just to clarify, will the facade of the building be facing the trails, or will the rear of the building be facing the trail?
Yes, the rear of the building will be facing the trails, but that comment was more of the total square footage facing the rail trail would be minimal compared to a multifamily building.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rigby. Further questions from the commission? Hearing none. Other questions from those in the audience here today or those online? All right. If there are no questions or comments, we'd entertain a motion at this time for case number three two nine nine.
Move approval with staff conditions.
We have a motion for approval subject to the stated staff conditions. Is there a second? We have a second. All those in favor, please vote aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Rigby. It is approved. All right. That moves us on to case number three three zero zero. Same project. Go ahead, Mr. Baxter.
All right. To the meat and potatoes. Applicant proposes forty-four detached four-bedroom units in the suburban residential portion, and that's permitted use, and it's within the allowed density. For the suburban multifamily, the applicant proposes seven four-bedroom detached units, which I'll just approve, along with a hundred and thirty-two bedroom and two hundred and sixty-six three-bedroom multifamily units. We've got the special use application and for the, for the multifamily units. I go through the parking calculations altogether. Thirteen hundred and twenty-two spaces are acquired with up to sixteen hundred fifty-two. Applicant has indicated thirteen ninety-five. Applicant is proposing an architecture style that invokes Rosemary Beach. Mission-style parapets are a repeated theme throughout the development and are prominent on the detached dwellings, while they are incorporated with a more traditional architecture on the multifamily buildings. Fiber cement board and lap siding, as well as brick, are used as primary building materials. If y'all recall, this property is subject to a variance that was granted in November twenty-three that reduces the mitigation burden of the developer. Per that variance, the applicant is required to plant at least three hundred and twenty-one mitigation trees back on site, and any needed contributions to the escrow in excess of that would be required on the following schedule of a one-to-one ratio for the first hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then a one-to-two ratio for everything thereafter. The applicant has worked very closely with staff to square the results of two separate tree surveys. Average between the two will end up requiring the applicant to pay three hundred and fifty-eight thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars to the tree escrow account. We expect to work with the applicant to probably add some more trees on site to see if that amount can be lowered, as we would much prefer trees planted on site. As for landscaping, applicant has provided a landscaping plan that indicates required frontage trees, parking lot trees, mitigation trees, as well as foundation and required screening plantings, all in conformance with the Land Development Code. As part of the surplus and sale of a portion of Landis Road, the applicant will be providing a multi-use path along Landis from Old Taylor and through the property to connect to the South Campus Rail Trail. Pedestrian easement will be required for that portion of the path on private property. Engineering has provided comments related to access, water and sewer, and stormwater management of note with access is that the applicant will be making upgrades to the intersection of Landis and Old Taylor that I believe includes a signalized intersection. And staff recommends approval of the requested site plan for the fin with the ten conditions that are listed in your staff report. And applicant is here if you'll have any questions.
Excellent. Questions from the commission? Site plan approval for case number three three zero zero. Questions in the room? Mr. Rigby, do you have any questions? Site plan approval for case three?
No question.
Real quick, the, I saw we're going to increase the water, this is more for engineering. They're going to increase the water main from eight to sixteen inches?
That's correct.
Yeah. So is that, I'm assuming that's going to kind of cure projected growth going forward?
It will help, yes. It will, it will help as far as, because they're going to replace it from Chucky Mountains all the way down to Landis Road. So the intent is to bolster our water system to be able to accommodate that development. Any developments further south, they would be required to make their own improvement in the system. So yes, sir.
That was my next question. Okay. And then like the lift station, was that going to have to happen anyway? Or is that tied in with their project, or is it going to be upgraded?
It'll be tied in with their project.
Awesome. Excellent. That's all the questions I've got. Any other questions? All right. If there are no questions from the commission or Mr. Rigby, anybody in the audience have any questions or comments? Anybody online have questions or comments? Site plan approval for case three three zero zero. Hearing none. Would entertain a motion at this time.
Move to approve the staff condition.
There's a motion to approve subject to the ten stated staff condition. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All those in favor, please vote aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Rigby. It is approved. Thank you. That moves us on to case number three three zero one.
Thank you. So this is a request for extension of city utilities to serve the proposed MRP development to be located off of County Road three hundred, Oxford Way. So your vote tonight will be for a recommendation to the mayor and board of aldermen on whether or not to extend city utilities for the project. The property is located in Lafayette County, west of the Oxford city limits, and it's zoned R3 according to the Lafayette County zoning map. The property measures around fifty acres, in which the applicant proposes to construct a mix of apartment units, townhomes, and detached dwellings. Requests for the use of city utilities are reviewed to ensure that they meet the standards of the city's land development code. So for the purposes of this review, the applicant proposes that the west side of the development fit into the city's suburban multifamily zoning and the east side with NR Neighborhood Residential, which staff agrees with. For use and parking, the use and density is appropriate based on the requirements of the code, and the property is going to be adequately parked with around one thousand five hundred and four spaces total for the development. The coverage at fifty-one percent for the SMF portion and fifty-six point one percent for the NR portion is under the maximums in the code. The landscape, the applicant's provided an adequate landscaping plan, as well as architectural drawings and building materials which meet the requirements of the code. The only outstanding item related to the multifamily architecture is the proposed non-install carports for the apartment buildings, which we have not received information on the materiality or design for those. So that will need to be resolved prior to the issuance of permits. In terms of connectivity, sidewalks are indicated throughout the development and along County Road three hundred and Oxford Way. A ten-foot multi-use path is indicated throughout the main road in the development, which runs north-south between the two distinct areas of development. The engineering department provided a comment related to access, water and sewer, and stormwater management. And staff is recommending approval of the request, or recommending that you recommend approval, the request for the extension of city utilities with twelve listed conditions.
Perfect. Any questions from the commission?
The applicant's here as well. We have questions for them.
And logistics question, Ben, do we have to contemplate them separate, or can we do this? It's all one case number, but we have the request for utilities and the request for site plan. It is okay if we?
It's just a request for utilities. So just one, one question.
Okay. Perfect. All right. Questions? Mr. Rigby, do you have any questions? Utilities extension, case number, go ahead.
No question.
All right. Are there any questions from the audience? Or those with us online? I have any questions myself. If there are no questions for case number three three zero one, I would entertain a motion at this time.
Move approval with staff conditions.
A motion for approval subject to the stated staff conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All those in favor, please vote aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Rigby. It is approved. That takes us to case number three three zero two. Mr. Hirsch.
Hi there. All right. This is a request for site plan approval for Oxford Commons Commercial. This is two point seven acres in the Oxford Commons Plan Unit Development. It is lot one in the Spargo subdivision. The applicant proposes the development of two commercial buildings which total over twenty-two thousand... which total over twenty-two thousand square feet of commercial space connected by a twenty-two-hundred square foot courtyard. The proposal indicates a total of thirty-nine hundred and twenty square feet of interior space and twenty-two hundred and sixty-six square feet of courtyard space intended for a bank with drive-through facilities, which is special use in SEO, which is the underlying zoning for this parcel. This application is yet to be received by staff. Its middle approval will be required before building permits are issued. The remaining square footage, twenty-one thousand square feet, a little over that, is indicated as shell commercial space for tenant build-out. For this mix of uses, one hundred and twenty-six parking spaces were required. The proposal provides for one hundred and thirty-four spaces, which is in the allowable maximum. This tract is referred to as A one point one, the Oxford Commons Plan data table, which allotted commercial square footage of almost seventy-five thousand square feet. The proposed twenty-five thousand in change square feet is within this allowance. This site would permit up to eighty percent in privy's coverage. They are proposing a little over seventy-seven percent. The proposed development exceeds the front yard built-to-line maximum fifty-eight feet along Ed Perry. The special exception to facilitate this building location was approved on the consent agenda at this meeting. The proposal implies all the other relevant setbacks related to the underlying zoning. Some other elements of review included architectural building materials. The materials of both proposed buildings were in harmony, the architecture of the Commons with one another, stucco, brick, wood accents, and metal shades. There is a landscaping plan provided which calls for street and parking lot trees, required plantings around dumpster enclosures and retaining walls, and foundation plantings. A tree survey mitigation calculations were provided, and a total of eighty-two two-inch caliber trees are gonna be required for mitigation, thirteen to be planted on-site with developer responsible for payment to the tree escrow account for sixty-nine two-inch caliber trees. A photometric survey and lighting plan is provided, which indicates conformance with the LDC standards. Engineering provided comments related to access, water, and sewer, and stormwater management on access. I want to quickly note that we are working with the applicant on cross-access between this lot and the lot to the north and to the south. There's a likely shared access point on the south side of this lot with the lot to the south of it, Lot Two, Spargo, and then there's perhaps going to be cross-access on the north side as well. Lost it, sorry. We are recommending approval of the requested site plan for the Oxford Commons Commercial with the eight conditions listed in your memo, but happy to answer any questions.
Real quick, well, are there any other questions from the commission? Mr. Rigby, do you have any questions?
No question.
All right, real quick, as far as access, there is connecting. Obviously, that'll affect the parking. Are they still gonna be able to meet the parking requirements?
They're currently over the required by eight, and so we expect that we'll work that out with them. But yeah, we don't have any, we don't anticipate issues with parking.
All right, that's all of the other question about. If there's any other questions from the commission? None. Hearing none. Are there any questions from the those of the audience or in attendance with us online? Questions for case number three three zero two, site plan approval? If there are no questions or comments, would entertain a motion at this time?
Move we approve the staff conditions.
There's a motion to approve, subject to the stated staff conditions. Is there a second? There's a second. All those in favor of approval, please vote aye.
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 Thank you, Ms. Rigby. It is approved. That brings us to, yes, sir, case number three three zero three.
Righty. So some of y'all may remember this from a couple of years ago, a couple of years before that. Subject property measures approximately twelve acres and is located at southeast corner of Clubhouse and OUS Drive. It's zone ten. The property is not inside the Grand Oaks Plain Unit Development. It is the first parcel outside. In two thousand nine, the property was rezoned from industrial to neighborhood business, and the application that we received previously states that the current property owner acquired the property in two thousand and sixteen. During that time, they've created several development proposals that were not marketable. So in two thousand and twenty-one, the first iteration of this request came, and Plan Commission granted a special exception to allow a single-family residential neighborhood to be constructed at this location, and that had significant neighborhood support. After eighteen months, the special exception expired. Applicant returned in April twenty-three. Plan Commission granted again. Eighteen months has gone past. We're back for the third time. And so in addition to that special exception, they are also coming forward with a residential common interest development request. So for that RCID request, there's a plan in the application packet, and we've received a site plan and staff office for eighteen-unit residential common interest development. The plan indicates stormwater detention, a park and green space that's located near the intersection of Clubhouse Drive and OUS, and but because this property is an existing subdivision, an RCID is a special exception request. Staff has received a copy of the filed covenants that address all the requirements of this use, and as such, staff recommends approval, the request of special exception for an RCID. And for the essentially first-floor residential request, area is currently developed. Industrial and commercial businesses are limited to the west of Clubhouse Drive and OUS Drive intersection. This property is the only commercially zoned property to the east of that intersection. It would be ideal for a mixed-use development to be located at the site. Staff does appreciate that developers tend to create this type of development. Since that subject property is surrounded by already developed residential, staff believes that it does make sense for this property to be developed as a residential neighborhood. Additionally, it does seem that this proposal will be compatible with the existing neighborhood and will not adversely affect the public interest, and as such, staff recommends approval with the condition that approval is for a single-family residential development as indicated in the submitted plan, and that plan is subject to change based on the site plan review committee, and that the special exception will expire in eighteen months if we don't have building permits, and that the homes are generally in the realm of suburban residential. But it's an RCID, so that doesn't matter nearly as much.
Thank you, Mr. Baxter. Are there any questions in the commission? Mr. Rigby, do you have any questions for case number three three zero three?
No question.
Any questions from those in the audience? Questions from those with us online? Case number three three zero three. If there are none, I would entertain a motion at this time. What's that?
We'll get to separate requests. First motion, second.
Oh, okay. So do we need to, do we need to split these off and do them piece by piece? Okay. All right, so to clarify for the record, there's a special exception under three five eight two, RCID districts permitted, and we have a recommended approval presented with it. The special exception, which shall expire eighteen months if no building permit has been issued, is the only condition for Part A. Is there a motion for Part A of case number three three zero three?
A motion for the approval of Part A of case three three zero, with the recommendations listed.
There's a motion for approval of thirty-three oh three, Part A, with the stated staff condition. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All those in favor of approval, Part A, please vote aye.
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 Thank you, Ms. Rigby. Part A is approved. Thank you, Ms. Rigby. Part A is approved. That brings us to thirty-three oh three, Part B. Special exception as provided in section two six seven TNV regarding first-floor residential. Any questions or comments regarding Part B, first-floor residential? At this time, would entertain a motion for Part B. There are three stated staff conditions.
Seven of the conditions.
There's a motion for approval of Part B with three stated staff conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All those in favor of approval, please vote aye.
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 Thank you, Ms. Rigby. Part B is approved of thirty-three oh three. Thank you, Mr. Baxter. That brings us to thirty-three oh four. Mr. Bim.
Yeah, good evening. This is a special exception as provided in section two point six point eleven for first-floor residential for property located the northwest intersection of North Lamar and Molly Bar Road. The property encompasses about seventeen acres with the urban center zoning district zoning designation. As I mentioned, the applicant is seeking this special exception for first-floor residential units for a development called Welden North Lamar. The proposed development includes a mix of uses across the entire site, including multifamily residential, commercial to include restaurants, retail office space with a pedestrian plaza, and it also includes surface and structured parking to support all of the uses. Application notes the intention is for the entirety of the development to be built concurrently and not to be a phased master plan with parcels to be sold off and developed by unrelated entities for future development. The proposal before you includes a total of three hundred and thirty-five residential units with a total of seven hundred and ninety-seven bedrooms and approximately sixteen thousand, let's just call it sixteen thousand, of amenity, leasing, and lobby space areas. There's just about forty-one thousand square feet of commercial space. The application breaks the development down into three areas, Zone One, which is a mixed-use zone, Zone Two, which is multifamily, and finally, the parking structure being Zone Three. The mixed-use zone is located in the southeast quadrant of the site, so it's closest to that intersection of North Lamar and Molly Bar Road. This site, this area includes Buildings A through E, a pedestrian plaza at Molly Bar and North Lamar. Buildings A, B, and E are all four stories with first-floor commercial space and three floors of residential apartments above, while Buildings C and D are single-story commercial structures designed primarily for restaurant uses that include twenty-foot ceilings, allowing optional mezzanine build-outs if they desire at some point in the future. And finally, Building E connects to the parking structure via its east facade, which conceals the parking deck, and it provides a breezeway to pedestrian access. This first-floor commercial space will focus on professional office and house the development's leasing office. The multifamily core or zone covers the remainder of the site outside of the parking structure. It includes Buildings One through Six. Buildings One and Two are fully residential. They have three floors, or they read as three floors from Molly Bar, and four floors to the north as grade drops to the north. They do include stoops at the ground floor, which activates the space towards Molly Bar. Buildings Three, Building Three is four floors with first-floor amenity space facing the outdoor amenity area. Building Four is four floors of residential. Buildings Five and Six are primarily residential with small commercial spaces flanking the entrance drive and stoops at the ground floor along North Lamar to enhance pedestrian access and street activation. Centrally located, the centrally located parking structure is designed to serve the entire development, functioning as primary parking for building, for some buildings and overflow for others. From Molly Bar, only the four above-grade stories in the south, our most visible side, will be seen, while two lower levels step down with the site grade and are not visible from the street. The structure is wrapped on its east facade by Building E and provides primary parking for residential units in Buildings A, B, and E in the mixed-use zone, and Building Three in the multifamily zone, while other multifamily buildings are primarily serviced by adjacent surface parking, as you can see on the plan. The application indicates that the development will see and or will seek, I'm sorry, seek an overall five percent reduction in the required parking due to shared parking efficiencies in the mixed-use context. Earlier conceptual discussions, earlier conceptuals and the discussions between the development team and the city contemplated a mixed tenure program, so it had some for-sale product, had some rental product combined with a broader range of community-oriented amenities. The current application, however, indicates that all residential units are to be rental apartments with no for-sale condominium components retained in the plan. This shift has implications for long-term resident investment in the project, for the diversity of housing types within this urban center location. Initial concepts for the site also included third spaces with amenities such as a small amphitheater, had a pond with an internal walking trail, and a space for a farmer's market to appeal to both project residents and to the broader community. Those elements have been removed in the current iteration in order to accommodate additional surface parking in support of the housing and commercial components of the development. That's not something that's uncommon for us to work through a project, and you see certain things that are refined over time, but I do think it's noteworthy. You know, I think the previously discussed mixed for-sale product and the inclusion of third spaces, such as the amphitheater and the walking trails, they were certainly attractive elements to the project from the city standpoint. The current program indicates that only, it's about a third of the first-floor frontage in the mixed-use buildings are to be devoted as true commercial space, and roughly two-thirds occupied by residential units and associated amenity areas. This could be a reasonable ratio in a more suburban context, but on this highly visible urban center district, it falls short of the intended pattern of continuous street activating uses. Staff is concerned about the limited amount of commercial square footage and the potential that it underbills for the long-term economic and place-making potential of this important site. Over time, the constrained supply of leasable commercial space will limit opportunities for neighborhood services needed in this area. Increasing the proportion of first-floor commercial, particularly along North Lamar Boulevard, would better implement the district's vision and ensure that this site functions as a true mixed-use center rather than a predominantly residential project. So staff, the recommendation, the welding proposal represents a significant investment at this location in Oxford with a commitment to construct all the components, including the commercial elements concurrently. Staff believes that the proportion of commercial residential on the first floor of this site does not adequately provide the desired quantity of commercial for this important urban center site. Therefore, staff recommends denial of this special exception. Should the commission make a finding to grant the special exception, staff does request the following four conditions that are included in your staff report. I do know that the applicant would like to address the commission, and I don't know if you want to do that before taking any questions, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have right now.
Any questions for you right now? Questions for the client inform?
I do have one.
All right.
Ben, so just looking at the data, you know, it's thirty-two percent ground floor commercial, one-to-two ratio, and I noticed in your comments that you talked about at that particular location, what would be the optimum ratio of ground floor commercial versus?
I don't know that there is, Chris. I mean, the code presumes that a hundred percent of it is is commercial. You know, we have seen closer to fifty percent, fifty-one percent that the commission has been been willing to grant this special exception. I don't think a hundred percent is, you know, is ever the answer. I think that there are developments that certainly seek that, but we do like mixed-use centers, and we understand that there's a balance to that. And, you know, we've had multiple conversations with the development team on this, and I think, you know, you're gonna hear their explanation of trying to find where that area is. It concerns me having large areas of our North Lamar corridor just be all residential on the ground floor. That's a concern, especially as we see, we are really seeing that transition right now.
Hey, I'll see any follow-up questions. If not, the applicant, come on up. Appreciate it. So. I'm Stuart Paval with Develop Design Studio. We're the architect on this proposed development. You all re-mailed this, but nothing like having paper in your hand as well. Yeah. Yeah, JR, Ben is handing out the two-page, two pages of PDFs that he emailed to you this afternoon.
Yeah, I got it. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank y'all. Happy early holidays. We provided a narrative letter along with the drawings. I'm not gonna spend the time to go back through that narrative letter. Staff has done a great job of summarizing that. Anyway, there are first a few things we want to clean up from the staff report. First, and the second page- First, and the second page of what was handed out goes along with this. Staff notes that one-third of the first-floor frontage in the mixed-use buildings is devoted to commercial space, but I think what they mean is one-third of total square footage, ground floor square footage on the site is devoted to commercial space, not just in the commercial zone. In that commercial zone, we're a hundred percent ground floor, so.
Yeah, I think it's across the total site.
The total site.
But a lot of those buildings run out towards the.
Right. But, yeah, exactly. So to that point, we want on page two to point out that the buildings that actually front on Molly Bar and North Lamar, the square footage of that, were forty-six percent commercial on all of the buildings that, that front Molly Bar and North Lamar is forty-six percent commercial. And I'll come back to that. We also want to note that in response to the staff report and, and staff consistently pushing for more commercial, we're going to take the leasing office, which was in building E, three thousand three hundred sixty square feet, move that into building three. So, so now, now we're adding thirty-three hundred for a total of forty-four thousand plus ground floor commercial. So we're, we're adding a little bit more speculative commercial into the development now. That gets us to now thirty-five percent across the entire site. All right. So on page one of what was handed out, what I emailed, is a graphic, and I say this truthfully, this is the most impressive and complex assemblage I've ever seen in my career. It's twenty-two separate properties, ten separate landowners. One of those landowners is the city with a right-of-way acquisition along Molly Bar, which we worked closely with to get that, that right-of-way acquisition as well and make sure the city is protected and has what they need for future expansion to Four Lane of Molly Bar as well. And while I would not expect you all to make a decision based on my being impressed by the assemblage, I do, I do point that out because I think that this development, now seventeen acres, is an opportunity for the city, for all of us and for the city, obviously for the development team, to develop this property, this triangular property, as one comprehensive and cohesive development. And we have that opportunity because of the work that the developers have put in in partnership with the, the landowner, the current landowners, to assemble all of this together. I believe that this is our opportunity to see a comprehensive development here that is master-planned and cohesive rather than seeing this property develop piece by piece over time, building by building over time. And I think that's an asset. At this point, I want to note some challenges and differences that this development has compared to some other even very recent developments that you all have seen that are similar in nature of a large-scale mixed-use master plan development. One at South Oxford Farms that was approved and one out on Highway seven that was recently denied. So I'm going to go through some differences and also speak about some, some, some challenges that we have that they did not, some differences we have that, that are plus. First of all, is the grade. The grade on this is just gnarly. We've got seventy-five feet of grade drop from the high point on North Lamar to the low point on Chickasaw. That seventy-five feet of grade drop happens in what is effectively a city block. That is the single most toughest challenge we have. Forty-five feet of grade drop from the intersection of Molly Bar, sorry, from the Molly Bar intersection with North Lamar to Chickasaw is forty-five feet of grade drop. And most of that grade drop happens from building A, which is the little entry there, going to the west. It's challenging with these grade drops to make commercial, commercial storefronts work when you've got grade dropping across the face of buildings. It's challenging, if not almost impossible, with buildings one and two along Molly Bar to make storefronts work along there, let alone the parking that's needed to support that storefront. Another thing I want to note is Chickasaw. Chickasaw is a, a smaller residential in nature, and, and it does not want and cannot support commercial along it. So that's another, another challenge that takes out effectively a large amount of our acreage for commercial development because that really wants to be residential in nature back in Chickasaw. So that seventeen acres becomes a lot less in play for commercial development once we say Chickasaw really wants to be residential back there. A positive difference that we have compared to a recent development is, as Ben noted, this is building, being built concurrently. There's not a plan to create out parcels for speculative hope that someone might buy it in the future and build commercial or hotel or something like that. This commercial square footage, this forty-four thousand square feet, is what they're committing to, to build today concurrently with everything else. In fact, it's really going to be built first, even before, it's going to come online first, before even the residential. That's a positive difference in this development versus some others that y'all have seen. So I want to revisit an earlier point I made about the forty-six percent ground floor commercial, the forty-four thousand square feet that we're showing with that graphic that I provided, that second page. I'm revisiting this because I want to make a point that we believe that, that where we are today with forty-six percent of, of, of commercial development along our two main roads is very similar, I believe, no one has a crystal ball, but similar to what if this property, if we didn't have this opportunity to create this catalyst development at this corner, and it was going to develop over time piece by piece, maybe someone creates an assemblage here and there and proposes two buildings at a time. I think in the end, as, as y'all have reached, you know, forty-five to fifty-five percent ground floor commercial is what you want to see, I think that's probably where we would end up. Where we are today is probably where, where we would end up with this property if it were to develop piece by piece. You would see special exceptions like you've seen across Chickasaw for townhouses and residential deeper in the site and along Chickasaw, and you would see applications for mixed-use buildings where you would be pushing developers to get to that forty-five to fifty-five percent threshold of commercial. You wouldn't see as much, I don't believe, because they wouldn't, because they don't have the opportunity with seventeen acres to put a parking deck in there. You wouldn't see as much development, either commercial square footage or residential, in my opinion, not having a crystal ball. In my opinion, you wouldn't see the square footages of either that we're showing because we have the opportunity with seventeen acres to drop a parking garage in there and, and pay for that parking garage with the development as a whole. So staff, one real quick, staff notes on the, the third spaces. We, we did, we were early, show, early on showing these third spaces, these park-like spaces. Staff had indicated early on that we could possibly even use that as, as a civic or an institutional type use to offset some of the residential and kind of count that against the residential. It hurt all of our hearts to see that get whittled away. Everyone wanted a park. It was, it was really for the development team, a central part of this concept, but as we added more commercial square footage, or really what it is, as we, as we realized we needed to park it in a way that would make it viable, it got whittled away. And it just, you know, I don't think staff is saying, we think these developments should be providing parks. I think they were noting that, you know, early on, they were positive when they saw that. That was an offset to the residential, now it's gone, and, and maybe they're not so positive because of that offset going. Finally, I'm a believer in the North Lamar corridor. I'm a believer in the north, North Lamar corridor as it jumps Molly Bar. Our office is, is, is just a stone's throw, literally, we can see it from our office. And that's, and we're there because we believe in this North Lamar corridor. We believe that it is going to continue to develop. Sewer line has been installed, which is going to in itself spur development. And I believe that this, this project can be a catalyst, a linchpin for that first jump across Molly Bar and for the further development of, of North, North Lamar across Molly Bar. However, by definition, a catalyst development finds itself on an island of sorts until development around it builds up. Being on that island, and this not being a big-box commercial development with, you know, destination retail, you know, forty-four thousand square feet, we're looking at probably twenty-plus tenants to fill that space, thirty tenants. These are, these are small tenants that are fitting into this. This is not big box. We're not late leasing ten, twenty thousand square feet at a time. And for that to be supportive, we've got to get a balance of beds and residential in the area to support that square footage. Forty-four thousand is a lot. It's a lot for someone to try and buy it off and deliver all at once like they're doing, and it needs beds. We feel with our development, we've found that balance. Forty-six percent along the major roads, thirty-five percent across the whole development. And we're, we feel, and the development team feels, this is viable. They can build this today, they can fill it over time, but without, you know, that greater residential development around it, building up and building those beds, they don't feel they can do more at this time. They feel that they've reached the point where they feel this is viable. They're not going to have to come back in and ask to put units in there like y'all have seen. They don't want to do any of that. So obviously, we hope we can convince you all of the same. The development team is here as well, and there may be some, if some questions come up, that I may kick that to them as well. But I'm here to answer questions and respond to comments. Thank you.
Stuart, excuse me. Stuart, I was looking on the map here. You're talking about the topography. So on the southwest corner, that's a, that's a detention basin or a little small pond right there, is that what that is?
Yeah, it's, it's a small, well, the majority of our detention will be underground subsurface. That's a small bit that will help offset some of that subsurface.
Reason I was asking is, I mean, this map looks like, you know, there's like a rise right there. You guys going to cut that down and move that dirt to offset a little bit right there along Molly Bar?
Significant dirt work across the whole site. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a gulch in there, so there's, there's, there's a lot. We're not, we're not balancing, but we're close to it. Yes, lots of dirt work across the site, including, I will add, stabilizing what is a maintenance nightmare for, not nightmare, that's a strong word, but a maintenance headache for, for the city along Molly Bar with washout. You know, part of what we're doing, and this is part of the right-of-way acquisition, is make sure that we're stabilizing all that, we're filling it in, we're bringing everything up to the street grade.
That was my question. Perfect. I was going to ask if you think you can get up to street grade.
It's all coming up to street grade, yeah. Those, those buildings, one and two, are at street grade, and then the backside of them is dropping into a basement level into the site.
Okay. Five and six up there, those little small hatches, that like little corners of commercial, is that what that is?
Those are small commercial spaces, and, and, and they're small because that's what we can support with the on-street parking. You know, that's, that's the amount that can be supported with that angular on-street parking. Commercial spaces with parking behind the buildings that then people have to get out and walk around are just not viable. So we're showing the amount of per commercial square footage that can be supported by the on-street parking there.
Okay. And the parking along Molly Bar, is it, the city just doesn't, doesn't want to do that?
I think Jeff and John could speak of that, but because of the curves, because of the proximity to the intersection, I think that on-street, we would love it, I think, but I think it's, it's not going to happen there, I believe.
The, and last question, NIC?
That, that's a lot that is, is not a part of the assemblage. The sole lot in this triangle.
Okay. All right. All the questions I've got. I will clarify real quick. I think you said, you said that you guys are going to move, it's like, was it the last, was it the last block on, I guess, page two of your, it's like thirty-three hundred square feet, you're going to move it out of, like, commercial building E or building E over to building three?
Yeah, it was, it was thirty-three hundred square feet where we were going to put the leasing office at the north end of building E, which is the one facing the garage. And so that was not included in our initial commercial square footage because it was leasing office, so we didn't count that as commercial. We're moving that into building three inside the site, the leasing office. So now that will just be speculative commercial space, just like everything else. And that brings us up to about forty-four thousand square feet. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's clear for the record. All right. Questions from the commission? Mr. Rigby, do you have any questions online?
Yeah, I have a, a comment and maybe a question. I mean, I, Stuart, I like the, the overall development, and especially everything south of building six. I think my biggest concern with it is the North Lamar corridor, especially given that there's already commercial uses on the east side of North Lamar up there. And I don't want to put any additional residential pressure on North Lamar to redevelop towards residential uses instead of commercial. Does that make sense?
You're saying you don't want to set a precedent for North Lamar to become all?
Yeah, precedent, or, you know, changing the neighborhood to justify more commercial along Lamar. I mean, we're in our most dense zoning district here with urban center, and I like the mix of uses and everything, but North Lamar, more so, more so than Molly Bar, is really my concern for the preservation of the commercial space.
Yeah, I understand that. The, the challenge, the challenge up there is the parking, like I said, and, and.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, getting buildings that, that can park with convenient parking for that, that, that commercial.
Yeah, I understand.
And, and like I said, just to drill that point home, that, you know, if we take all the buildings, all the ground floor along North Lamar and Molly Bar, forty-six percent, forty-four thousand, it's, it's not insignificant. I mean, we're, we're getting darn close, like I said, to the way this would develop, I believe, if it developed piece by piece over time.
I think percentage-wise, that's probably close, but I think that the frontage along North Lamar would eventually be more commercial if it was, if it was being developed piecemeal. And so, I mean, I understand there are pros and cons to a big development like this. The pro is that you can use it as a catalyst and you can build it out all at once, but that also means that the whole thing has to pencil at the beginning. And you may not be able to do that with the commercial units that you've got there to keep all the frontage on North Lamar.
Yeah, I mean, I think you nailed it. I, I think that's right, the, the pros and cons and the ability to make this pencil out with it being one large development. I, I think that's, you nailed it, you know, that, that from the city's perspective, that is a negative to not have all commercial on those buildings. But, you know, the trade-off is that we're getting one large cohesive development here for seventeen acres versus piecemeal, building by building. I will say one thing that's thrown, that's been thrown out is styling that ground floor residential to feel more commercial. That's certainly an opportunity, possibly even building it so that one day it could become commercial if it needed to, so that it's not, you know, your typical apartment construction, but it's built with framing that allows it to be opened up. These are possibilities we could discuss with staff and explore, but it'll be tough. That puts some serious pressure on a project that already has some serious pressure on it.
Stuart, what is the driving reason to do this all at one time?
I will do my best to answer that, and we may want to bring up development team to do it, but I think the driving reason is that, you know, there were, there were some key properties in here that amounted to, I think, about five or six acres that were on the market. And Ryan started trying to assemble this together, and I, I think, I think the key reason is it's an opportunity to do one large development like this. You just don't see, it's such an important corner like this, an opportunity to pull all this together. I think, I think that's the driving reason, is look at this opportunity we have to create this kind of catalyst development here at this corner. And I think without pulling it all together like this, you don't have that opportunity. Like, you know, I didn't touch on the corner plaza that we have, that that is going to be semi-public space. They intend to introduce or explore areas, opportunities for public art, public gathering space. I think that if it's piece by piece, you may not see those opportunities. You definitely don't see the opportunity for a parking garage without pulling all this together. I realize this is a really big project and, and a lot to take in. We have our site plan review next month, which, you know, will, will be more technical in nature. This is the critical path application, the special exception. This, this is the critical path. So I realize it's a lot to take in. We've tried to summarize it in a narrative ahead of time for y'all to kind of get your heads around it.
I'm in favor, you know, just, I guess, for the record, for the applicants, you know, we need, really need to really stick with our commercial, especially on North Lamar. You know, that would be my criticism on buildings five and six, that, that those all be striked, at least the part that's fronting Lamar. So building six makes an L, and so that would be mine. If I could change something, that's what I would do. I would have that, five would be commercial, bottom floor, and then that, that part of six, it faces. Five would be commercial, bottom floor, and then that part of Six that faces, for those reasons, because it faces North Lamar. And maybe it's that, you know, I know you're going to build them all at the same time, but maybe you do hold out those floors and see if you could put the tenants in there or not, right? I mean, that may be more convincing to me, you know, as, hey, we've done all this and we can't, there are no tenants. I think a lot of people come up here and say that, you know, we've added up for lease for however long. But as we see it today, look at it on paper, that would be, I tend to favor more with that, understanding that you can on Lamar, or, excuse me, on Molly Bar, leaving Buildings One and Two alone, because there's no on-street parking, it's not, you know, people are going to be zipping by. I mean, I do think it'd be visibility, as a business owner, like, to be right there in that high-traffic area, but I think that would be the balance to give a little bit to the applicant, but to try to hold strong to what we're trying to preserve, and you know, all about that, so.
Well, I appreciate the direct feedback, and I think we would sort of appreciate a roll call, I guess, to know if we, you know, well, firstly, respond quickly to the, well, I forgot what I was going to say. I think we would sort of appreciate a roll call. I mean, I always, at this point, sort of put it to the commission, if we can knock this out and get it approved, it saves an agenda item for next month. If it feels like this is, you know, something that needs more work, if we can have a roll call and kind of understand that, I mean, I feel we've made a pretty compelling presentation with the 46% along the streets, but, you know, if we have to table this and come back, we can do that, because we're back next month anyway. But if the majority of the commission feels like this is feeling good, we could just knock it out.
Understood.
And I appreciate the direct feedback. That's kind of what we're looking for, yeah.
Yes, sir. Anybody have any?
Yes, Stuart, just from my standpoint, I'd say, I'd still like to see some more discussion about the North Lamar portions. That's just where I am right now.
Okay. I appreciate the feedback of Commissioners Murphy and Rigby about more commercial on North Lamar. I will say, though, that I do believe the pros of this contract, of this proposal are compelling, with it all being done at one time. And so if we can find a way to make it work with some conditions to add just a little bit more commercial, I would be in favor of the project.
Is there a simple way to fix it? Yes, Stuart, is there a simple?
Y'all could just vote to approve tonight, and we're done. I don't think, you mentioned conditions. I mean, I think, I don't, I don't think staff or we would be comfortable, I don't know, there's some huddling here, but comfortable saying, add 10,000 square feet and we approve it. I think it's probably something, but let's see.
I know many of y'all sat where y'all have sat, and Commissioner Brassfield, you brought a point, is there a simple way to fix it? And perhaps, and I don't know, we would need to do a whole lot of amendments to it, but move the commercial that is in E on the parking garage up to North Lamar? So then you have more commercial, I mean, you have, it's almost all of it along North Lamar is commercial in that Building Five and Six. If that's what we're trying to accomplish, is having more commercial along North Lamar.
So ground-floor Building E would go residential units, that about 8,000 square feet, to get us back to 44,000, we'd be fit into Buildings Five and Six. I think that's what you're saying.
Yes, and then you've got, we've got more commercial along North Lamar.
We're designing at a microphone here, so I don't know if that's something, I mean...
I mean, how does that work in those two buildings? What, Building Six? Five is, Five and Six? Sorry.
Yeah.
That's not right.
Yeah, Five and Six.
So does that mean, like, half of that building, the half of the depth towards North Lamar is commercial?
Yeah.
I'd be curious to see what that looks like and...
I would, too.
How viable it is. I mean, it sounds simple, but I don't, in actuality, I don't know what that actually looks like.
Right. It's simple to move numbers around. We would need to consider parking and viability and all that, but...
This looks like a commercial area, kind of right here with E, A, C, D, and B, like that whole little, and that looks like that was by default, to have your commercial area right there.
So, yeah, yeah, so that cameo was Brian, he's part of the development team. Brian and Ryan, their front seat are our development team. I think they would love to get this approved tonight, you know, so what he said is, you know, maybe it's just Building Six, because the parking is a challenge, and so getting that in proximity to the parking garage, which is really the bulk of the parking for that building, so that people are walking from parking garage east to North Lamar, up North Lamar to get into parking or get into the commercial. It sounds like there are opportunities for us to explore this, but I don't know that we can set conditions, I don't know, I don't know that we can set conditions here of, like, trading square footage around at a microphone without starting...
I think the commission wants to make an informed decision based on actual plans that we've vetted and talked through, as opposed to saying that sounds great, because, I mean, the actualities of this land, I hear Commissioner Latimer say, you know, a little bit more commercial. I think we want to see what a little bit more commercial actually looks like, and want to make sure that it's viable, too, not just, say, any numbers.
I tend to agree. I think it'd be clear for the record and clear for everybody involved. It's a big project, it's a lot on the line. I would hate to have some murky clauses and litigation and all kind of nonsense.
Yeah, I could feel the pressure coming from back here.
Favor clarity, so.
Well, I sort of summarized what I'm feeling, then, is, you know, the 44,000, the 46% along our main roads, the 35% across the whole project, it's not an immediate, your numbers are just way off, it's a location. It's, if we get back to 44,000, if we get back to these numbers, but we're moving some square footage around to where y'all might want it, it feels like it could be supported.
I was going to say, I want to make sure my position is clear here, because...
Or we could add, Ben says, yeah.
I'll say, Mr. Kirk, wisely, but that's not, so, that's not what I was saying.
Okay.
I was saying, I like what you've got. I like A, C, A, B, C, D, E. That looks like a little commercial hub, a commercial area, it's great, there's a garage, it all makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
I was saying, in addition to that, we, as a city, want more commercial on all the projects. 100% is just not, that's where we start, but that's just not, as we see everybody's project coming forward, it's not really viable, it's hard to substantiate, et cetera. And so we're striking this balance of, okay, let's give a little bit, instead of requiring 100% commercial, we can get down to 40%, 50%, right in there. And I'm saying, I want to hold strong as we can, too, as much as we can, without killing a project. We're not going to do that either. And so I was just purely saying, hey, one area that we could add some commercial that may be viable, and please come back and say if it's not, but here's a long one.
Okay.
That's what I was saying, so what you got, plus...
Got it.
That's my position, and that's not for everybody, but that's, because of my position, so.
Is there any other? Can I say it?
I love it. I sure hope so, yeah. I mean, we have some huddling to do. I feel like everybody feels like this is a good proposal, and we need to figure out a way to fix it, yeah.
Really, very good. Mr. Rigby, do you have any further comments or clarification on your position?
No, I agree. It's a good development, but let's just see if we can tweak it to get to finish line.
What's the best procedural mechanism, motion to table or withdrawal?
I think it'd be a motion to table.
Yeah, so I would have to request that we please table it, if y'all would.
Motion to table.
A motion to table, we have a second. All those in favor, please vote aye.
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 Thank you, Ms. Rigby.
Thank y'all.
Yes, sir. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second? All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye. Aye.
We are adjourned.